Now I think I did it too. I actually said for two. So I can do it. I think they'll say I love you so much. So they worked out well. I see those guys. Yeah. You're ass. No, alright. Good, that is good. How you doing, man?
Good, how are you? I guess so.
Yeah?
Well, almost.
I feel what?
Oh, no.
I thought it was me. I wonder if my mind was. I was always sure. Well, we're great. Hey, that's seriously interesting. Ninety thirty. Ninety six. That'd be a right. Wow, 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 wow. And that's walk. Yeah, I need a speaker. Where? September? December. September. This will be, uh... Six, seven. Point one. Jackie's is. Jackie, Jackie yours. Yes. They come off by, by the credit card. Well, there's your ballet last summer. Alright. I just got far from that idea a long time.
There was a ballet on yours too. He didn't have anything on his. There was a ballet on yours.
Yeah, I still have a little too.
He needed to have anything charged on it. And there's that down there. Yeah, so we need to make sure you're wearing all that.
What I did was, I got there and went. Just another free factor. And I didn't, and I didn't get in there. Right. I don't know, we just wait on Friday. I'm gonna want to do next year. Well, I'll tell you. In a couple of months. The stuff is in the morning. Hold the right of course. Pretty much. Till I left my birthday. Well, as soon as I left y'all, when I did that, I was straight out there. The only thing I should say is to go away. I followed five thirty that morning, going getting my luggage and following down. Okay. So when I push, pick up my clothes, drop my luggage. There's one ballet. Just text this number, we should be there. Drop off. This is a big. Alright, thirty one. Well, congratulations. I think.
Yeah, it is a joke, yeah.
Did that? Now, I may have a little, uh, our team in favor to the end. I could relate to China. From the best thing I've watched. I wouldn't start even more. Throw punch.
Okay, probably at the plaza.
Yeah, I guess it's a heat. The sirens don't seem that he said he would be here. He said here. Done. Love. We're working. We're gonna have to stay in line. Let you. Come on. Even we had to. We had to work overtime. PM was there. Okay, guys? Well, this is God.
It's the nap, everyone, yes. Yeah, we've got a lot of work.
And we're getting my message. It's huge, though. I taste well. I would say probably. Looks like a loss, please. Do you see them? I'll continue to have conversations. He said no. I'm sure family are ready for this first time. Oh. But the central center that. The witness had just finished. The whole team, I'm pretty impressed with it. You're supposed to defend your. Rules.
I don't know if they go back to.
Need to get a shirt. You know, I need here on the. Third, not press your age, you start us off. But I'm sure we got you. That's why. It's a challenge.
No, well, no, it's a good. Yeah.
At least talk with a team. Shoot. Well, I've been saying not to. Especially the left, turning this American. Four, five. Two fiscal, two fiscal. They did problems. You know, once you get there together. How would you believe?
Straight country.
I see. I put the statement out. Now, I think, uh, police, chamber staff permission to that law. Fifteen, you remember. Say I put all the. We know you did it before. How's that tip you sent her done? Being the one that has. Fifteen gets it finished. Yeah. Uh, I'm made on. I'll tell them one of the. And they. Saw your sticker at that picture. Where at the G P's? Was that nothing? Look like nothing. Was that, was that a non-call? They look like they're natural fire. What are we getting our hotels? With their natural fire back there? No, fire? Yeah, that's what. Yeah, apparently got about the law one day. I was. This is. He just went out there. Oh, I was talking there. That's the murder. Touchdown. I, I was, there was a fire at G P also. Yeah. That's where I went. It even catch one. They're probably. Really, really. Very exciting. Battery? Yes. I think this one happened. Well, you know, the. That was a level where everybody had to charge your. All that stuff. Yes. Yes, first.
First.
What you do, let's go back and. Around here. Every one of them. I'm trying to get some of that. Let it get to the. Yeah. I hope it's. Turn that fifty cent to yours. Yeah. Sure. Escape that. And they, uh... Looks more like a ladder. Oh, the car. Wait, what's the rate? Yeah, it's good seeing them all land back. Oh, wait. Thirty, there were thirty two of. Will open sleep. I'm. I'm on some pride. Whenever. They're coming back for their. More private. Back there. Therefore, I'll answer them. I'm like. They're annoying. Thank you. Yeah. I have another question. Thank you. I'll have my discussion. I wish you already have a question. You're welcome. No, I don't. Because we did it. I wish I could ask that same question.
Oh, no, they won't.
They're telling you. Alright. I'm sure. I can't hear anything, man. Nobody wants to hear you. I can't hear anything. Get eleven to ten. My wife and I get along so well. You're beautiful. And I'll do what she said. What's going on, did it hurt?
Good morning. We're calling this meeting in order. Young County Commissioner's Court setting in a regular meeting. September the ninth, two thousand and nineteen. It is fifteen minutes to ten. We'd like note that this proceeding is posted in matter for the time required. We've got all members of the court are present. Convenient through. If you pray with it. My dear Father in heaven, we're grateful for this day and for all the many opportunities you bring to us. We're grateful for the salvation we have in Christ Jesus. Uh, we ask your blessings upon this meeting, upon all of the officials within this county. We're grateful for this nation, we're grateful for this state, we're grateful for this county. Uh, we ask that you provide your wing of counsel, your wing of comfort. Uh, your, your protective wing over all of those many people who stand in harm's way. Uh, protecting and defending the rights and privileges that we have in this nation. Uh, we ask your blessings upon those who lost loved ones, who've been in tragedies way. We ask that you console them, bless them and. Know, let, you, let them know that you're in their presence and you're there for them. We're rapidly approaching in just two days. Uh, a day that I think no one should forget, although I believe many may have let that slip back into the back parts of their memory. We wish to bring that back to fruition and let them remember. September the eleventh, two thousand and one. And the mark that was made on this nation in the direct attack there. And though there are many who lost their lives unnecessarily, there's many who've lost their lives in defense of. Of our nation and of freedoms and the liberties that we have. We ask that you guide this court in its service to the citizens of our county. That you counsel each one of us. Uh, and that each one of us ask for your counsel. We ask that you, we, you forgive us where we fail you, you know, we will. In the Christ name, Christ, amen. We're going this way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. First time on our agenda, the public hearing with regard to our. Felt by twenty, that is fiscal year twenty budgets that we've been working on for the last couple of three months. One eleven of the local government code provide we must hold a hearing. If we increase tax, we must have two public hearings on that tax increase, which we did have. The first on, um, August the twenty-sixth and the second on September the third. This is a hearing with regard to adoption of our budget. It's open for the public comment and any member of the public wishing, I wish to address the court. Our budget calls for an expenditure of thirteen million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. That is consistent with a one hundred and seventeen thousand and seventy-seven dollar tax increase in totality. Or about one and one and a half percent. Tax increase. We have rates here to cover that if we've calculated properly on debt rate of point zero seven six five one four. Which is a little lighter than what it was in the previous year. That rate can move to whatever rate is necessary to cover the debt that we owe. The only debt that we owe today, uh, caused upon the debt is that of the Young County Law Enforcement. At the detention center, of which we should have that covered, I think, in about the next three years. The other rate that, uh, it appears that it's gonna take to cover this budget is our M and O rate, which will be point six four, four two, four five. Uh, and that's total of the, um, general fund and the majority fund and that is a road bridge fund. We don't actually collect a tax on our road and bridge department because we have never elected. By county election, by issue to impose a road and bridge tax. Farm to market or blood control tax in this county. So we're talking general revenue. A total general revenue rate at point six four, four two, four five upon the current budget. Or a total rate of point seven two zero seven five nine. Road or any member of the public, if they wish to make comments on that. Is there anyone who wish to make a comment on that at this time? I'll make one more statement there that does include a twelve hundred dollar raise for all permanent full-time employees included in the electric system. Any member of the court wish to? Rest, uh, in thank.
The rate that you had was set six four to point six six?
Yes.
Isn't that really different from last time we met?
Well.
Yes.
In the discussion with our professionals, that's Big Luke, Dave. We use one hundred percent on our debt rate. Collection, so therefore we need to use our net taxable value because they got adjusted from there. To arrive at that rate rather than the point eight. Always true.
Thank you for the.
The amount that needs to be required is seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. You will divide that out into our net taxable value at a hundred percent collection rate and that's what the rate calculates would be. Point oh seven six five one four.
So.
And on the, also on the M and O rate, uh, we also utilize the one billion, twenty-three million.
Eight six.
Eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars as a, uh, three hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars as a. And we utilize that figure as the net taxable value. Uh, and we figure that at ninety-five percent of collection rate.
That's the figure that's used in there to figure our effective and raw back tax. And you have those figured. I told Debbie what I've been using and she saw and, um, she said, well, what kind of rate is that looking at? And I said, point, you know, six six one two. And she said. As long as you don't go over your rollback rate. But now, when you use that other, the bigger number, of course, your rate is gonna be less. If you use the certified freeze, which we didn't use at any of the calculations, it's gonna be, you know, a lower rate.
Is that not gonna put us in a squeeze next year?
Things are gonna change next year too and.
Go ahead.
She said things are changing next year.
Right.
The whole.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna penalize our taxpayers. Cause I'm telling you. Done to us. My question is, this tax rate covers the budget that we have worked months to give. Yes. This is the budget that we left on the table last week. It does. And that rate covers it?
It does.
And I can have the rate. So the rate is different from what we've got on our agenda even?
Yeah, it's a little different. You're point seven two zero seven five nine? Yes. Point seven two zero seven five nine.
That's great, that covers, covers our budget. However, next year we certainly may need to, uh, look at maybe dipping into reserves to cover some excessive tax situation, but that'll be next year.
I would think next year, um, other than, other than an emergency circumstance that. Something that would constitute an emergency and that. That's maybe was.
It's a word for.
What constitutes? Emergency circumstance, something that you can't reason with.
But we work. We've worked hard on this budget, both on the revenue side and the expense side, to keep it as manageable and as correct and as low on our tax burden as possible. Using this calculation method makes the tax rate what it is. Those numbers work out for themselves once you set your expenses and your revenues.
These tax rates cover all budget expense.
The half percent above the effective rate.
That's a simple, that's one and a half percent of the effective rate.
That the rate is seventy-one.
Seventy something.
Seventy-one.
Seven zeros.
Four nine five seven. And the total now is point seven three.
Seven five nine.
Seven five nine. We calculate the number of taxes that this will produce against the number of taxes that we produced in our last budget or that we sell. It's a simple half percent.
Seventy-one to seventy-three is a half percent.
But this doesn't change our budget at all?
No. Without changing it at all.
So what's, what's the penny worth then? Ninety-seven?
With the, yeah, with the, um, net taxable value, a penny is ninety-seven thousand, two oh seven. Which, if you use the certified freeze value, is ninety-four, seven forty.
And history's proven we always use the certified rate.
No, we didn't always use that.
Okay.
About three years ago, since I'm on rich. I don't know this quite, but that's when the freeze adjustable value first. First became obvious or first became certified in our certification. These numbers are figured off of our tax calculations. What was over there, August sixth, that's a snapshot time. It had changed since the twenty fifth of July. Because there's other revenues that have been brought in that affected the calculations now. The certified rates are certified based upon what was the snapshot that day. And taking into consideration what the protests were. The protests were settled when we did our calculations and I changed the whole, I changed the whole picture of this, so. I, I know. Penalize or, I mean, this is, this is gonna be. My calculation, simple act, increase over our. Over our effective rate. I mean, we're gonna raise one hundred and seventeen thousand, seventy-seven dollars more. Or we're selling all that, that much more than the adoption of the.
Like I had a visit last, last meeting, we've got three and a half, three hundred and fifty thousand, four thousand dollars worth of additional increases departmentally for things that we have to spend money on. The C P I for counties is about four percent. Just those alone are right in our budget and if this, our budget didn't even cover by this kind of tax rate, then the numbers are, what the numbers are.
Yeah, I, I make it cover, it covers the budget. It raises the amount of dollars that are required. You, you agree with that, Cheryl?
I make the budget.
You concur to that?
I do. Like she said, you can dump any rate you want to, as long as you don't go that rollback now, but, um...
But we're going backwards from what we.
No, we're not going backwards, dude. If we went backwards, we would be under. Effectively.
Yeah, what I'm talking about is what we talked about over there. We don't know what's gonna happen this year for next year. And it's in our place to get set to cover what's gonna happen for next year to be in the safe thoughts.
I don't know, but I really agree to pay up. Uh, or you're suggesting that we penalize our taxpayers for what legislature did this year?
I'm not saying we penalize them.
I'm.
It's not penalizing, it's getting prepared so we can make the payments for next year and make the revenue for next year we need.
We taxed to cover the budget that we lost, lost the budget that we're gonna, uh, expound.
They're back, but then transferred to cover that budget. It's part of the pay increase for.
We what?
Many transfer of.
Unbalanced.
Some balances to accommodate those increases.
That was a compromise. That was a fruit.
So it's compromises that the budget would stay as it was, could lose that money to pay for that raise? So it's compromises that the budget would stay as it was, could lose that money to pay for that raise. The numbers have changed because we're using a different set of numbers, but it still covers that same.
Yes. Those different set of numbers are the front worksheet that we use forever, up until about three years probably. I don't know why, if we began to use the freeze adjustable value. We've had a long conversation with Debbie Wheeler, a long conversation with Luke and we're all satisfied that these are numbers that we could or shouldn't use.
Officer, our legal folks are okay with it?
I talked to Debbie this morning and she said, definitely we could use that net taxable value. She said, using anything you want, say the rate that you fund. These are the numbers that we use to work on our worksheet to get to our rollback in effect.
We've just been working for months on a different set of numbers, not a sudden of the third year, and we come in with a different set of numbers. So excuse us for having some questions about.
Oh, I don't, I know.
Situation as it is. Numbers that we've never seen.
This thing last week.
What's that?
We're calling, looking at the, looking for that rate. Was the one that we calculated using a hundred percent of the value. We had on our worksheet, it wasn't signed numbers that we came up with, so that posed me to go looking. I thought it was dollars, dollars plus. And searching those things and called Luke and we got a pretty long discussion. We came down to one point where this being the snapshot of the day, August sixth, where our numbers were, where our calculations led us. These were the numbers that we need to use to calculate the tax rates on this budget.
That's the only rate that's set still that you should use on your, Debbie said, if you do it at a hundred percent. The others, you, you calculate those from your rollback in effect, what would you say?
Honestly, and, and opposite of what he's saying, and I've never said it, I don't think you ever said it. We just wanted to where next year when this, this does happen, we do not punish the taxpayer by saying, wow, now we've really got to raise taxes. We don't want to do that.
But you can't.
But you can't.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I mean, we're, we're, I don't want to put ourselves.
Services are in.
Would you hurt the taxpayer? I don't want to hurt the taxpayer. I'm a taxpayer. I don't want to hurt, I don't want to hurt nobody. So I want it to be right.
Same, same, same time though, we had a budget that we felt was, wasn't necessary to operate this coming year and we agreed upon that budget and.
Just rising to sign dollars, that's good.
Bottom line, we said taxes collected to pay our expenses. And sure enough, we may have to do some creative work next year.
We also have a completely budgeted one.
I don't have it. All I have is what we calculated in there. So it's the same budget, we're just recalculated all the numbers.
For our, our taxes.
That's the same. All of the current taxes are the same. I just had to refigure off of the new net taxable value rate.
So I'm going to see here, twenty twenty budget is four point eight three. And then that twenty nineteen budget is four point eight three, twelve thousand five hundred dollars in there. We're going to raise, we're just going to raise twelve thousand five hundred dollars more through the taxes.
The whole thing is.
We're going to raise a hundred and seventeen thousand seven, seven dollars for taxes. Well, it's also in the jury fund and it's also in the federal bridge fund. They're all, they're not separate. They're all in the taxes. General fund, general fund later in the year. It will might be. It might be presented as a tax that is from taxes. You know, transfer what it is. We have charging, we have automatic collection, federal tax. It's a. Long line, that looks like you could have. If you had the election to do that, then you could assess twenty, fifteen cents maximum on a special road tax. Or you, and you would, if we had a warming market, but pro, or another fifteen cents, but then those tip funds, that fifteen cents is going to be on the market aspect of what a rollback tax.
So the only taxes that are different would be the M and O, I mean, the debt service, because we're using that other number at a hundred percent. So it goes up by three thousand dollars.
Is anyone sitting in this room that's got some clarity to this whole situation and what we've discussed that's sure like to hear?
Very, very confusing.
Well, I don't prefer.
The more transparent they try to make, the less transparent it becomes.
It's a difficult calculation to work through, it takes a while for the last, I don't know, six or seven years. Five or six years we've had Debbie Wheeler who does this constantly all the time.
Ellen who Debbie Wheeler is. Not what Ellen who Debbie Wheeler is.
Well, she is a tax expert that is employed by Part of Brandon Fielder Collins, Mott, with our Atlantic Tax Electic Agent. And she does these presentations and assists in different organizations with these type of calculations. She, you any right name? She would do any class writing, um, it's right here on the other.
She actually has a right with tax grab.
She worked for the comptroller's office over the years. She knows her.
Bottom line is this is the budget. Was to be presented, none of the numbers in it have been changed.
Take one to thirty eight, they're all the same.
Except for the base rate and the calculation of these records.
And I have to change the debt service a little bit because I have a different tax on there. Would it be collecting three thousand dollars for taxes on debt service? So that, that would well change.
Probably close about.
Well, we're on the right way for the. On the paper bill. It's a good thing.
Considering the rate last year was point seventy five, this year is point seventy two.
What would it been last year after you did? Were we using the wrong numbers in the pre this year? Did we use the wrong calculation numbers in the pre this year?
You use different ones every year. I won't tell you if they're wrong, there is, it's a, it's a. Different values, whether it's net taxable value or free's adjustment.
I'm just saying that point seven five to a homeowner is a lot different than point seven two.
And values were at.
Values were up this year, which have dropped in then. That's exactly right. Which is a blessing. We're up with thirty five million dollars in tax base for this year. And revenues are up, we're part of revenues. And our expenses are the same as last year, save those areas that were underly mandated by the state, those indigent care figures and the court appointed attorneys, juvenile probation and autopsies.
We'll do it either here or.
Right. Oh, she's for indigent, it's court appointed. You know what's talking about that thing? And those, those are the growth areas in our budget. Other than the twenty seven payroll, which I can say in our budget group this year. Everybody's got to contend with that, the pace every two weeks, every week.
Even though they're gone up, they're dealt with in this budget.
That's it. And if you figured the other way, we'd come up with a tax reduction.
They're not, they haven't been very friendly with us or they just like to run around.
How's the tax action?
Call us, please. Repeat, I guess, of, and you saying some of the thoughts. Some of, I guess. I might be having a little difficulty with the planes of paper now.
Just, um, let me say this. If we run into a problem with the three and a half percent, even with the de minimis carve out that we're allowed to have, which also includes an election even in it. The, uh, we may have to visit adding funds from fund balances to keep our rate beneath a rollback election rate or whatever it needs to be in order to. Luckily, over the years, we've managed the money that we have those balances, so. It's kind of where to live with it, it's unmanaged.
Well, I guess there are options. One is, um. Use fund balances to do things that you want to do or need to do. They're often used.
Yeah. So you're likely to run out of fund balances.
It's something that we haven't done except here in this budget. Uh, we never, we never budgeted any of those funds that have there. That's problematic or have been passed because. Just because of our budget, the budget act one eleven, the code, which is not applied on this county budget act. That describes a process by which the commissioner's court must go through. And the budget officers to, as you established, to take the budget to tax rates. It actually calls for every resource available. You don't have a resource in your budget viable to the fair, this margin circles, I'm sorry, if that's all making us all. There it is, I'm on it. The attorney general is defined, I guess, on urgency and intended that the commissioner's court only. Spend money in strict compliance with the budget, or is another term strict compliance. He might have heard that a little bit.
Well, looking ahead, we're going to be looking at some transportation dollars coming into county that we're going to have to cover one hundred percent before we get whatever amount back that we're going to get. If oil goes to thirty dollars a barrel, we stop importing those wages from the workers out of Minnesota, that's the area that are working in that oil field. The economy is going to get pretty soft. And I, I by no means think that that's going to happen enough. I pray every day that it doesn't. Sitting here at this table, we got to look at those things tonight.
What we're bound to do is fund the budget that we're covering.
I agree with you last week to, to fund the budget that we had sitting right here on the table at that time. And these tax rates cover that budget as agreed upon.
I believe it does.
Officer, you check, make sure that all the calculations are done properly and what have you. But, and I just hope that we don't run into that problem SB two has presented us with. As a dirty word, SB two, remember that.
Is there anybody else who might comment with regard? The budget we proposed, the budget that we proposed to adopt. I'll bring that motion to the table. I'll move that we adopt this budget in Young County, Texas, is presented this night, today, September twenty nineteen, and unaffected on October first, twenty nineteen, for the twenty nineteen twenty budget year. Do I have a second? I'll see. Mr. Rogers, sir. Commissioner Sykes, there you go, further discussion. Commissioner Sykes?
Based on the agreement we had last week to fund the budget that we had on the table?
I agree.
Mr. Bruce?
Yeah.
I hope yes. Mr. Rogers? Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
The next slide on the business then is to ratify tax increase. My calculations are, are, mine and the auditors are ratification of one hundred and seventeen thousand and seventy seven dollars. Tax increase, is that what we?
Yes, sir.
Seventeen oh seven seven?
I got a hundred fourteen oh twenty seven.
Well, maybe I could add three more thousand to that debt service.
Uh, we got that right, okay.
So one seventeen oh seventy seven. Which is about point oh one six.
When you post that or calculate that against the tax that we propose for this current budget, how much percentage of their increase? Six nine something.
One oh one six.
Oh, one six, one oh one six. One. A sixty, a so one one six percent increase.
One oh one six eight.
One six percent. One four seven percent rounded up. One one seven percent increase. Percent to one eleven, one oh oh eight C, Texas local government code. Order ratifying tax increase for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, actually the FY twenty physical budget year. I'll also move ratify property in, in the race reflected in the adopted budget. Young County, Texas.
Second then.
Commissioner Sykes? Okay, ready to discuss with the board for that. Okay, Commissioner Sykes?
Aye.
Mr. Bruce? Mr. Judge Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Mr. Wiley?
Aye. Okay, so we have ratified the tax increase. Percent thirty one, twenty six point oh five, Texas tax code order setting tax rates for the tax year twenty nineteen. Percent thirty, uh, twenty-six point oh five, Texas Tax Code, order setting tax rates for the tax year twenty nineteen. Also take that. Move that. Uh, John C. Bullock, move Young County Commissioners' Court, set the debt service rate for the tax year twenty nineteen at point zero oh seven six five one four. But we sort of the data is calculated in our worksheet computation. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Okay, it was all for. All in favor? All in your vote? Aye, John C. Move the property tax rate for maintenance and operations to be set at one six four four two four five, correct the calculation? You don't have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five a half?
This tax rate is above the overall effective rate, or the rollback rate, and will impose more total tax than the preceding year. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's rate, that's the tax rate. And the tax rate will effectively be increased by, that may be a little slightly different number, sure.
One hundred and seventeen oh seven seven.
We're gonna raise how many dollars for maintenance operations?
Total? Total for maintenance operations is still the six million two hundred sixty-two thousand five eleven.
How many dollars would we raise, maintenance operations last year?
Six million one hundred forty-five thousand. Six million one hundred forty-five thousand eight thirty-four.
What's the difference there?
I expect a lot out of my little calculator here. Yeah, it's a big one. Hundred and sixteen thousand six seventy-seven.
What percent?
Point oh one eight.
One one eight percent. Okay, this, uh, this tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance operations than last year's rate, and the tax rate will effectively be raised by one one eight percent. I'll now ask for a vote to ratify all of these tax rates. Commissioner Sykes? Bruce? Mr. Rogers? What? There we have it, Mr. Rogers, tax rate sale. Are there any? Are there any comments, anybody who might?
It is that way.
I'm tired of this hearing, wait, I'll put my motion for that. Rogers?
I'll say.
Motion by Mr. Rogers, second by Mr. Sykes, please. In the public hearing, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, I don't remember the four. Couple of comments, and now some presentations will be in the next five minutes. I don't have you listed on here. Does anybody want to make a pitch on this?
Let me make a couple if I know. The, uh, Young County Servvier and Service is coming up. This is a great cause, it's a great foundation that needs to be helped here. It's for our first responders, it will be taking place on September twenty eighth. From noon to two, will be the luncheon barbecue pork sandwiches, for ten dollars. Maybe it's all about our first responders, building a fund for them. At night, later on, seven o'clock, we will have a dance at the Pavilion, the HDH Pavilion, east of Holly, with Jay Cooker and his band. It will also be to support our first responders. And considering the resurgence of problems like in New York City and what have you, we need to show the world that the folks in Young County absolutely respect the people who are there between us and, and harm's way. So, please, show up if you can, do not bring your ten dollars back, we will take. Uh, also, on October fifth, Grand Evening Lions is entertaining the carnival that they struck two years ago. It will be out at the girls softball field, October fifth. It will be a big top circus, just an old-fashioned big top circus. If you remember, last time, we had two jam-packed performances, they'll be at two and four-thirty in the afternoon. No reason that you folks with kids or grandkids, or know somebody with grandkids, can't come to the circus and enjoy that. The tickets will be on sale starting this week. Uh, please help the Lions Club, help the community in which we serve. It's all, thank you.
Will it be one day?
Be one day. It's a Saturday. Saturday afternoon, absolutely perfect, October fifth. Hopefully, we'll get a little cooler weather, but, you know. Anyway, you go duck hunting, and send the kids, or grandpa, or grandpa, or wife to the circus. We appreciate everything you do, the money, as you know, with the Lions Club, motto is, we serve. And then we'll be going back into our community to do the things that need to be done. So, thank you.
There was, uh, what plan would with four six, I'd move down to number ten, which is the, consider extension, uh, excuse me.
Eleven.
Eleven, consider actual life, extension, uh, and recommendations, Phil Derrick, also extension agent position, we have Young County, Dale Dunn last year. Got recommendations right alongside. I believe this is Savannah Williams.
Savannah? Yes, Savannah Williams.
Judge, Commissioners, what we have here today, Miss Savannah Williams, uh, in front of y'all. Uh, she is a resident, or a past resident, in Montague County in McCullough. Uh, four H member, four H member up there. Uh, she attended college at Clarity College and at Cal State University. Uh, got a bachelor's degree in animal science, so was a member of the livestock judging team in both, uh, at both colleges. Uh, after her graduation, she, uh, was employed by a commercial swan operation in Canada, then moved back to Wisconsin at a later date, uh, to be a manager of a, a show dig operation there. And then, since January, she has been an assistant agent, assistant county extension agent in Glasscom County. So, as district extension administrator in Verona, Queens District for Texas Animal and Wildlife Extension Service, I would like to propose to y'all, Miss Savannah Williams, for your all's approval, with the county budget rate on salary, uh, fifteen thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars per year, and then travel as budget, uh, with a start date of October the second.
October.
October seventh. So, I have to tell everyone.
Thank you. I hope everyone here has had the opportunity to visit with Savannah. I think you've made a good choice. And so, I would move that we, uh, accept, just when, that our new county extension agent has stipulations.
I'll say.
Motion. Representative Sykes, second by Mr. Wiley. The approved that recommendation from our district administrator, I believe, is Greg Todd.
Yes, sir.
Dale Dunn Lamb, who failed the extension position.
Agriculture and natural resources.
Agriculture and natural resources. Position that is currently open, and that is, uh, at the current pay level that we, we have our budget, which is to assess the extension service in that corporation in last hour. And that's again, seven.
Seven part of those.
Seven? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, Savannah?
See you, uh, then, if.
Hold on, I'm coming up here.
Your picture?
Right here. Pleasure. Our total duties is up, turns out.
Can you stand on a box? Oh, you know, whether she tours, she's great, they let the short jokes play. There you go. One, two, three. One more, if you can say, one. Thank you, uh, appreciate it, appreciate it.
Gonna see you in November, huh, sir?
I was about to, you know, one of the best things that we were having. Good one you got.
Uh, two people were coming, all the gym house.
And you represented them?
Yes, uh, Changewax, maybe, or your friend.
Good.
And then we're off, and so we built a.
They're gonna be on their box.
Regulations, all that.
Do a game of resource stuff. I'm telling you, that's one of the best ones.
And they were a lot about birds, man.
All right. I've been trying to make a, make a round.
I did, I think, Greg.
Okay. And so, our county commissioner, judges.
Judge, we checked it.
Yeah, we have to do it.
Because it affects everybody. All right, thanks for that. Good man, Brian. Got your break. Yeah, good break, huh? Oh, okay. Everyone up to the. Grandma, Jerry, it's all. Like that, say hi to everybody.
Griffin Green.
Bitch. Bunch of football players. Oh, is it? It's old guy.
Bob Lilly, that's.
Yeah, Bob Lilly, right there, Bob Lilly.
He's signing, signing our drafts.
He's late, huh? Go get you an art draft, Bob with it, Bob Lilly, you know.
Well, I said that, man, I'm working.
Joanne, I have to backseat you a while.
Not for you, but the fact that you didn't need to.
Supposed to be other people handling all this. I haven't seen there as many warrants come through. That one with Georgia is coming back to your office. Actually, I'll send it to my other mom.
Oh.
She's not contagious.
Oh.
So, that just becomes a classic assault.
They just made assault, assault family, mine was a classic, obvious.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, we have to report it.
So, we're back to roll the thumb now, we beat our wives?
Four hours and eleven minutes left on that one.
Five, always plus cost.
I tell you what, that one before, everybody been worth it.
I know, I know, I know. Yeah, we got all kinds of weird things with the legislature, the, uh, proverbial pick law.
The what? Oh, yeah, the picks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you're gonna get a bunch of those.
Uh, we better not, I told the judge, I said, you're not gonna put those on that D C A, you're not gonna put those up there.
I'm gonna get you lots of those evidence, I'll be sending to you.
No.
This is exhibit A?
No. I said, I'm gonna leave the room, I'm not gonna put them. Nope.
Tell them you're being offended by it, so.
So, I have to take it into executive section or something. Sorry.
No kidding. I just walk up and show it to the judge. Or would it make a hard time?
Yeah, there you go.
Let it call it. Take a picture of them.
Yeah. Legislative head, bunch of fun messing up the J D courts this time.
Well, they had a bunch of fun messing up, do you see the eight, uh, executive orders that we're just sending up? Governor, Act?
No. I heard about them, but I didn't see what they were.
It just requires, it requires us to be trained to have tech guns away from people, basically, not the people that are shooting us, but crazy people. But they only gave them sixty days to, to build the curriculum and to have us trained.
And are these funded?
No, no.
Of course not.
They're not funded, and I don't know anyone who's gonna build curriculum within sixty days. It's hard for people to put together any class from scratch. Not enough time.
I know. I know this is not your, um, ballpark, but honestly, I laughed when I heard that they were repealing the search warrant. I was like, oh, boy, DPS don't have his hands full.
Yep. Gonna be a heck of a line. They just lost all that money, too.
They did. But, I mean, there are so many times that that simply was not a fair law. It really wasn't. People could not get out of it.
No, no, it was a same.
It was a hamster wheel.
Yeah.
That's what I've always called it.
Yep. What else is there from those that paid their search charges and obviously?
And are not gonna be a minute. If they had to, or they'd lose the license.
They'd probably cut down on our, it's probably gonna cut down on our dope arrests, too. So many times we arrest them for no drive, or for, you know, suspended license and then.
Find the dope.
Find the dope.
It's. They don't come out to the real world to see how this affects the real world.
Well, their hemp law was screwing us all up. We can't even get our sample tested now. It amazes me that the DPS lab can't tell me how much THC is in marijuana or hemp. But somehow the retailers are able to tell me that, no, this has point on three. How, how do you know if DPS can't?
Because somebody in China told them.
Uh-huh. I'm gonna give you one of these for you, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, I gotta know. At least you got yours.
That's right, I'm the next support.
Definitely.
Have you ever had crickets over at the leader?
Not as bad as previous years. Like last year was really bad. This year hasn't been as bad.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
Yeah, they weren't this bad, but they were still bad.
Yeah.
I just noticed that one hit in the direction of all of them.
Like last year, that's where it was every day, we had at least seven to ten, just our part of the office. Today's maybe one or two.
Yeah, I try walking into this building when they're all the way up to the top floor.
Yeah.
It's, and the smell. And you don't want to park your vehicle anywhere close to the trees.
No.
Because the birds come in and.
Yeah.
Hey, how come you're not freezing up there?
Huh?
How come you're not freezing up there? It's not blowing on you? A little chilly back here.
There never be so cool up there.
I'll say it, oil goes thirty dollars. Give John ninety, ninety-three officers a job or something.
I let all the officers go. I gotta take that off, yeah. Oh, yeah. See, the fact.
He does have something.
Yeah, that will back skin decent runs. He's gonna wind up against the judge.
Kevin Spacy, what does Pete think?
That's what the DA's.
County pretty spicy.
I know, this thing over there.
Pretty spicy.
No sun in town.
Mm-hmm, it's a lot grayer than it looks.
Well, no, it's really dark.
Gin whiskers are turning gray.
Well, they are. Oh, were you talking to me or?
My stash is still darker.
Oh, wow. Part of being a lot.
Is it, what, up there, you just dine in a little more?
Oh, it'll never, y'all never sleep.
It's gonna be blonde and yellow.
When I'm ninety years old, raise a hell of the nurses home.
But it's just me listening with the correct.
Observation from the conference. There's a lot of William and I, distinguished, educated, older women.
It's a night of the slave.
You know, I, I like.
They got me surprised.
You remember putting out like that? Hey, Jason, he's never been put out. He's never been put out with the carotid.
They really do.
I went big, yeah. I went out one, and in the police academy, they didn't.
We had a little turnout.
I didn't teach you anymore.
But he says it kills. I just, I just. I'm duty to believe you.
Speaking of the house situation.
I bet I've used a carotid.
He said he understands that he's, that he's included, but he hasn't heard it yet.
I don't want sleep.
I talked to him about it this weekend. He said the Texas Rangers were looking into it, but I feel pretty sure that. The exoneration. I said, no doubt. No doubt.
Usually we have the conferences, Rick's birthday, and used to it all go to, yeah. Cedar North celebrate. And so, uh.
That's hard to do, you know, when we practice it, you always had to.
Sorry, but it gets celebrated. I know, we always. Just like, no, we went there to lie with you.
Celebrate for you, for you.
He's, he's got a cute personality.
Favorit of you guys each time.
I just.
Enjoying today. Playing down.
Yeah, we had the. We had the. Athletic.
Still didn't help a lot.
No, it didn't.
Oh, well, I'll get an extra.
Now, they didn't rule that out. You didn't hear. You're rude.
Not back here in the afternoon.
It's, it's got to. Pretty much about that.
Then the pressure point collapses. It always hit the bottom, it always falls your body. That hurt. I've never had to ask you.
Yeah, don't get too rough. Hang it up, we're trying to do it.
Is it me you're reading?
Do you try to hold your eyes?
Yeah.
And it's getting wet now.
Do you remember that video with that hemp? That triangle dinner, that hemp? Just puts it in the garlic shelf.
Oh, really?
Pain was probably worse than.
And then we had a stupid gas.
But yes, the, the main thing you did was the stretch is gonna. But you know, they can't.
Oh, really? Ours sprayed us dirty, you know, horn faces. Yeah, faces all yellow and.
Pork lung, BD, can't.
I have, I don't know. I checked behind you and there wasn't anything. Did y'all have a? We developed a whole. That's home. So we had to wear our.
I did that the first time.
And they started that whole thing on the range where they ended with gas. So we hit the shoots and all that. Oh, my God. Have you ever tried to shoot a rifle with a gas? Might as well just hold it up and just shoot. It's a good thing. I bet it wouldn't have. Some of those guys can do this, that. This way, I haven't just got there. Cherry kid all the way up a couple hours.
You eat it all.
I used to do that, so I don't have a big problem. I wanna do that so bad, but when you get to.
Are you certified?
You need to take me, I'm gonna teach me.
Well, I'm not certified to teach. Everybody go with you. I figured that brief.
You didn't leave me on there with you.
No.
Before I get those bands. Order, third. Man, she's everything but a long cow ring of words. I told her, very sure Will Pollard's gonna apologize already for the short jokes. She said I would've done them all my life. Friends. Shot in the head by a pressure. Excuse me? Yeah, lady got shot in the head with pressure. Man, I think that hurt. They're out. At least I should have heard. Get you back to my. My dude. And then near two. What else you get? The one underneath that one. Make sure y'all pay attention. Really, you have to have a point? Come on, go out there and suck it. It sounds like you said, hey, everyone up on there. Hey.
Hey. Said, hey.
You talking? Can I use?
I, I, I.
Jared, you remember when that bad road turned into a county road from a public access road? About the flat Lynn Whiting, it says it's a public access road. There's some times from the time you planted that subdivision up there until it made it to our county road list.
It's pretty long.
Yes, it.
For how long?
I don't wanna look into it yet. Sometimes I don't take very good, much care of it at all. It's just a driveway that's got thirty-four drives off of it. And it's on my county road list. So somebody needs to.
Well, if it's on, if it's on that. It's on the county roadmap.
What's the difference on the list and the map? Which has residence?
Those that are listed should be on the map.
I agree.
There was a few whenever we adopted that map. Not many, but there were, I don't know. Probably a half dozen. Scattered. County that hadn't really been said, like, names that the county did not find of interest to them. Where's the public interest? We didn't put those on the map. I adopted that.
I was saying. That's where that list came from, anyway.
And after two years' time, between the time we adopted it, we didn't have any conflict or any, I guess, petitions opposed together, any requests for modifications, so it became operational log. In the county road system, I did buy it on my map. So.
I'll say that's with it.
If that's the date, then, um, over your heads, that has a bad road on it, I'd say that it was adopted at county map, so. Yeah, it would be in the.
You had to do that in case, man.
Well.
I'm talking just the map with just county road.
And now she's got it. She'll have that. We probably got a copy of it. It will be in the board of directors.
My, my work is that there's someone approaching into the easel. Make it difficult for us to maintain what we spend, what time we spend on maintaining it. I need to have some sort of information in order to discuss it with the road owner. Because the plan shows a thirty-foot easel. And Lynn Whiting brought it back to me and I opened it up and said, public access road with thirty feet. Well, somewhere it's become a county.
Be followed as a public access road.
Yes, it is. In the subdivision.
Wouldn't this fly?
Same time as in the Enchiefs.
Uh, that's way back there.
Yeah, eighty, ninety, one or two.
And the Enchiefs not on the list.
No, it's not on the list. And Baden Draper, that door to it.
I think that's probably something to look into. Well, revise it. If it's on that.
Yeah, we need to revise our.
I got a few. In any, um, opposition to that map. I think it was do your requirements, so it's all such a small, it's a gang, our official list of county nine, eight road. Now, the only other way, as stated in the transportation code, the only other way to establish that road is for a new road process, to establish it.
But if our commissioners have been taking care of the road that's on our county road list, then it's a county road, right?
Well, yeah, it's been, it proved, somebody proved that it's been maintained, or if you can assert it, it's been maintained.
It's been maintained because it's on my road list.
Well, it's not about the Indian chief.
Yeah, Indian chief. So Indian chief's.
Sounds like it's gonna be in our maintenance system.
Indian chief is not being maintained. But it's kind of a sister situation, only the plan is the same. Road designation, that that plan had on the subdivision.
It's on my list, but we adopted it with our map and this was.
My question is, why didn't? Why didn't Indian chief make the? I wasn't asking you the question, that was rhetorical. You know, I'm just wondering why it didn't make the list.
I, I would say somebody, you say there's a reference is on it.
And it's about a two tenths of a mile, Rick?
The minister at that time, um, probably, who knows that they, we had a public interest in that. Stated on that map, we got a lot of rehearing.
Certain taxable properties on.
We had a few in those hearings that argued for one not being one of, I'm very, I don't know. But that's a connected road and it covered lots of.
Backwood.
It has.
Did you go to Calhoun?
Still a relatively important road, so, you know, I'll, I'll.
That's like the end of my.
Hope it never. People though, probably a class of three road.
So under grade, isn't it? He gave a copy of the two thousand seven roadmap.
It's gonna be the worst road in county grade.
Oh. He didn't read us.
Yes, we came back in order.
Yeah.
Uh, that.
Let's test it, we don't know what you do.
We're, um, set on line number five, consider county clerk's previous payment, certain of the third twenty nineteen. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Don't lose.
motion by Mr. Wiley, second by Mr. Rogers. To approve the minutes that presented, all in favor? Married by, uh. Consider auditor budget amendments and voucher favor?
Have vouchers? Always have. Total is ninety-six thousand, three fifty-three seventy-nine. And out of the general is eighty-one thousand, two oh two forty-four. There is also.
The Enchiefs. Second, Rogers. Approving this. Motion by Mr. Rogers, second by Mr. Cruz, approve of that. All in. Four oh one. Item number. Now, talking about this, Cruz. The updates on securities. And thank you all. Item number eight, discuss harvest jail report. Chief Deputy Conover's airplane reports.
This one's the jail? Sure, by all means. Sheriff was learning about the jail standards.
So they lock you now. Who is this?
Oh, there you go.
I got you.
All right. Everything's good, here's an extra bit, I did. All right, sir. Uh, average daily population's been fifty-seven. Travel, three thousand five, two and a half miles to transport, pick up inmates. Should put twelve in TDC. Um. Right, there's one over there. Uh, four, two more transports for a thousand, one hundred ninety-four miles. Of course, your typical twenty, maybe two more appointments, uh, fifty-seven people. And the inmates for the city grams, uh, cost was three thousand, one hundred ninety-three, that'd be for twenty-four misdemeanors. For all needs, there's five of them, for eight hundred thirty-seven dollars, and then other counties do eight hundred forty dollars. Question to the jail.
Jail facility is doing what?
Probably. They just put another air conditioner in. Of course, y'all are well aware of that. Uh, they help it. I don't know, could hurt. Yeah, I'm curious helping him. I'm not back there.
No, you go back.
I walk through.
It's cool when I walk through.
Um, it's interesting. Of course, we have Kenny Franks and O.C.D. I think we got rid of our. Roadblocks, key beds, and things like that, are operating well, they're all working well.
Yes.
All of that work. All right, as far as the patrol goes, we had a hundred and sixty-three calls, uh, it's up. Eighty-eight civil process papers served for five thousand, seven hundred eighty-five. Um. Twenty-four arrests. Three hundred and sixty-nine traffic stops, fifty-nine citations, three issues, that's up also. Didn't have any forensic inter music attendants now? This time or ask you. Um, yeah, exactly. Seventeen arrests for drug-related charges, two point nine grams of methamphetamine, half ounce of marijuana. Had two K nine deployments on those. Um.
LSD.
LSD, I put that up because you're seeing the old stuff come back up. You remember a couple months back, we had the mushrooms. Well, now we've got an LSD arrest topic, so, uh, all of those, all of those old drugs are coming back.
Question, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
Um, all other calls for service. What would some of those other calls kind of be?
Let me see if I have that, but. Quite a few.
Definitely like burglaries. Yes, same burglaries.
Yeah, so ones that aren't included in your stuff up there, so. Good thing, uh, listings like nine-one-one hangups, alarms, uh, dog calls. Controlled animal calls. Way missed works or strays. Found property harassment, those type of things. You've got FBI's. Traffic complaints, other. Let's see suspicious questions.
Anything that's not.
Yes, sir.
Anything that's not stated, we vote up.
Yes, sir. And then, all other?
All other calls.
Were you suspicious?
To some.
They're suspicious to some.
Suspicious.
Yeah, you're right. They're suspicious to some.
That's right.
And you get the call.
Yeah, when everybody comes.
You see, that's what they out there, pop fight, car pop fight.
I don't know.
Fifty-seven, normal.
So I bet it's gonna be right there, I'll just wait this thing.
Yeah, you were just there.
I may wear.
So is the current jail pop like?
Well, I just.
Count one. Did you say?
Somebody got out.
Somebody got out?
I have four tomorrow.
I heard it's four.
One with two, all French for some back.
West. Yes, sir.
Boy Ranch there.
Boy Ranch. And of course, when. PD arrests somebody, they transport. To the place, but then again, we'll get them.
Always transport their own.
The way it works, arresting agency is responsible, we're transporting them there. And then, and then, K.O. is on it or.
Either making.
I don't know. Yeah, they do, they're supposed to. And, uh, and then in our R's, after they get there, we're responsible. Judge, you notice an update with juvenile crimes this year?
No, I went, well, yes, here recently, run for show of court. It had been three. It had been required for all the rest. Year four. All the way around.
Somebody turn the faucet on a little bit?
You lie, by the order, you lie.
What kind of charges are they?
I think it's a murder, building.
Or vandalism?
Or, or.
Theft of farm?
They're all, they're all.
You can't do a background check on a theft of farm, can't. That's probably the background check.
I'm sure they're gonna do. Sure they'll fix it. What's the reason? Wow, trying to see, we had a trade, we're like, we have to bring in solutions.
Okay. Average age? Average age? Wanna be arrested?
I have no idea. Given that, what was the average foot size?
Big baggy. Thanks, guys.
Well, age could be meaningful. Foot size.
Louis.
I'm telling you.
Yeah, I don't know.
I was brought, I was sitting here with these papers, here's what I got.
I'm only gonna be able to give you what the poor has for. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Yeah.
Is that the, uh?
I know, he doesn't stand for it.
Item number nine, consider, Glory Vaughn. Live part of G Moore, he'll counter very much, not that long.
Sure. Second.
Mr. Wiley, motion, second. Approve that Vaughn, all in favor?
Yeah.
Item number ten, consider extensionated or request reimbursement, that would be Penny Baron. Things that we have. Reversion. Extension, uh, extensionated, he has. Second, I, work, I have a boss.
Sure. Second.
Motion. Uh, motion. Mr. Wiley, second question, would, would that reimbursement, that have a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Had discussed to, you make side contract. Y'all had that contract?
All right, turn it to the back end. The board has the board standing up. Our request for which?
I'm having contact with my.
What's hot in the country?
We need to delay this contract, I don't have a fair amount of board discretion. We didn't commit that in contract. If they so choose to let us to put. Kittens out there to hold.
Requesting to pay provide, or that they allow us to provide? Here's one.
Either one.
Can you want?
Either one.
That's, that's what we have. We could.
Foreign thing.
Yeah. And we can enter it on the outside of the facility during the weekend.
But from what I was getting, we're gonna have to build a cage or something.
That's outside.
You know what you got now? They said they got two, they're usually four.
But we can build one for us and they can't.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Set it up next to the fence and build a gate through there.
Yeah.
Let our officers, even the dog, none knows there. Like they don't care.
Just gonna make sure that food, Mark.
T four, does, was that so? Does that so have we? Can T or combination play with animals still?
No, we do not have that, now, we do have authorization to go put the animals in, but I'm not positive how we get them in there. I don't think that that's.
I wanted a lot, I didn't do it.
Yeah, the one that, that we put amounts outside cage now. That they have told us that we need to take one up there.
Okay, we need, we need to, sorry, Google. We refer to the third five month, or to allow us to provide a. Area.
Cage.
Twenty-four second.
Oh, he's a. And access to.
Well, yeah, keep, we really.
But it's strictly for us, um.
Yeah. And we really don't have a way to track them, can't put them in like the.
For the prisoner.
Or.
Okay.
Yeah.
Didn't know you were on that already. You didn't know you were the twenty four second.
Don't catch you a camel.
Don't pick up any camels?
I thought it was a trash, where was it, really?
I would have to look into that.
That's your idea.
I did keep up with it.
Like dollars, yeah, right.
I was like. I'd have to check.
You know, we could modify that.
You have a good politician, right?
We could modify that consideration part of this contract, take that last phrasey out of it, probably work for us. Where it says, in so long as space may be available in the shelter, and according to the society's purpose, if we took that out. It would probably accomplish, accomplish the use which we're.
But I think we need to specify there too, that the cage is strictly for the county.
So after, after, if you scan this, Young County, Texas, we can put a stipulation, county will provide, or shelter will provide a cage? Right, that's, what you doing to the rabid dog, and there's the county, though.
No, what he's saying, I know what you're saying, he's saying that we don't think about that happening to this rabid dog.
Needs to be an empty cage.
Right.
Same, like you're wondering, cage, old cat also.
Yeah. You know, cats, same way you do dogs, rabbits.
Okay. Trying to get some language into the word. Cause, up until that point, they're, they're accommodating, you know, county's use of the facility, for that purpose, we're talking about. Until as long as space may be available, or two cages, or two cages are full of dogs. And according to the society's purpose, they need to, maybe change their purpose to accommodate the cat a little better.
Pretty good, yeah.
Same, like so.
But, that means if the dog's on quarantine, we have one going up, and they kick that out. Or if I figure out.
I don't think you get that, did I?
The other empty cage, I hope there isn't another empty cage.
Yeah.
We don't need one looking.
You know, I. Uh, I mean, that works with the quarantine, or that works with the general population, too. Present something there, out of county, for the general population, and get their total, and get some back for something, something else. Five percent, and, and, you know, we've got two thousand dollars invested in that, so.
That might be. You know, two or three thousand dollars worth of trouble for them, sure, a lot of it. If we brought a dog in, they would have to feed and water it, observe it for ten days.
Well, quarantine, they wouldn't necessarily, uh they would actually serve, uh, that there, like, or someone who didn't qualify to read the sign.
So any dog coming into the humane society is not observable for the humane society's facility?
Sure. They certainly would, but they got an attitude control, they last, I guess, would say, not necessarily appointed, but last control, and control of their property, like that, or. Otherwise, it's, uh, no, our plan, like, we look like it, so you get a veterinary come around.
Check on them.
Get veterinary, make it, or serve these.
And is this contract something we need to work a little bit on before we authorize it? I think we table it for the next meeting.
Okay, okay, discussion.
Yeah, I see what Chris, Chris was gonna talk about that in their board of directors meeting, what he told us last time he sat over there, so what did they discuss?
Yeah. Okay, I have an idea.
I was just suggesting with the county, animal patrol officer.
I think it'd be good. It's hard to build long-term solutions in temporary personnel, that.
Personality group.
It may only be called out three times a year.
And those three times, they did, anniversary party?
Yeah, exactly.
Have an energy with Nathan or something?
Nathan, you're gonna be it?
Yeah.
Don't be doggy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Please.
All right, we've talked no act on the item number twelve, but continue, they discussed. Try to work out some kind of solution, accommodate for our.
Definitely. Definitely something more.
We don't need a last court job.
Well, there was, uh, there was one thing.
Like we did.
Checking one. I'm here to discuss issues that you think you just passed, and it has to pass, it's a deal. I do appreciate the fact that you don't have to give all of the full-time employees a raise per se. I would like to know, although my judge asked for a five percent raise for me, I'm not.
Um, short answer to that, do I anticipate, with the ladies generally for all full-time employees, that we're seeing, we're, we live out in my, um, general plan, and, and big plan.
Why? You realize that that's in the cross and the cowards without it?
No, no, not at all, in my defense, that's right. If I hadn't been in some negotiation, we wouldn't have had the twelve hundred.
I understand, and I am ready for that.
Yeah, I appreciate that special.
Okay. You didn't realize, I have been a court clerk for nineteen years with Young County, I have been a chief clerk for eighteen such years, I am a master chief clerk, I have been a justice court clerk for twenty-one years. I have earned to have more, I have earned the rights to have more salary than the other chief clerks, and this don't because, there's only one that I can think of that has been there as long as I do, and that is Linda, in fact, so. So why are you telling me that my work?
I'm not telling you, you're not worthy of whatever it is, I'm telling you what we afford, what we do, and that's what the board collectively has to decide on. Now, you can accept that or reject that, I don't, I don't, I don't, these other, gentlemen, I'll answer your question also.
So did, who made the decision?
This court made the decision.
All, all five of you?
That's who, that's who makes the decision, so this county, all five of them, excuse me.
But then any one individually made that decision?
So you decided to spend probably over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, instead giving me a couple of thousand dollars raise, because I have earned it, because I work.
I understand your logic there.
Well, you're doing it to your times, at least a hundred and fifty?
Well, you suggest everybody raises it this year.
Or you're suggesting that others don't deserve it, not using?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying that I deserve a raise my judge asked for.
I understand the judge asked for it, I ask for other things too, as did all of the other officials.
There were other offices that asked for more increases for their staff also, did not receive them.
County shows up for adoption area, I guess you could say.
During the public comments, didn't she make that comment?
Yeah, is there any, uh, is there any other matter with regard to the nice workshop? Not exactly addressed. I think, I think I'll get you all the elected officials, third, because his salary against his allowances, hopefully, I don't need about that. Notes is that we sent to our elected officials about the salary against his allowances. Means like we have some ounces, they could do that.
Uh, I'd like that, I think what Joey, the place you get that, is, they're newest boys, they're like, exactly the same age, she is, they're like, I mean, I know y'all have changed.
I know. We established, not individual, um, salaries necessarily, we, we established salaries for.
Obviously. But it's, it's often that she wanted, she wanted to force her opinion, and I told her that's wrong as well.
She just wanted to have her out, and that's where young woman stand, anyway.
And I thought, I thought, honestly, we were giving some chief clerks a little more, make it to a point of some of the thirty five.
I check out a three point six, and that's what it figures, and we put everybody's base on, on, just relax, on the employee, um, twelve hundred, actually, but three point six, we did.
Well, you, that happened, the place, home comp, and I have the salary, and that was five everybody, so your higher level salary, people got lower percentage rates than if lower rate's out, that one that got the greatest increase. So when, or she's, uh, if she wanted to visualize, if it's somewhere in between the least and honest percentage rate.
Is she talking about longevity raise or certification raise?
Both.
Cause on, on her, on her certificates, she did that over all the merit, she wanted.
I know, with the, thank you, ladies and ministers, she had to do the same thing, on her own.
And I, and I, we did a work deal for.
I, I think Luke was, I think he said that forever.
All right, Joey, she doesn't feel appreciated for the time, and stuff she done, you know, on her own.
Who treats her that way, sir?
Who treats her that way?
Well, me.
She just feeling that way through her salary?
Yes.
And, just like I said.
Well, I've never been paid what I was worth.
Oh, I know that. I drop down my road every day.
And you get.
You're on, you're on camera.
I don't care. That was, that was not a, it's a remark, that's a sarcasm. Well, it's. Sarcasm, meaning I'm not, I can pay way more than I was worth several days.
No, I just, Joey, they're excellent at what she does, I mean, very, very excellent at what she does, she, she knows more about that work than they.
No doubt.
It's probably every bit of ours.
No doubt.
Well, I know, I know she does what she does, and that's great, we've got other employees here that do what they do.
I understand.
And we've got other employees here that probably do more for more people than Joey does, so, she may have all the great certifications and all that, still, we're not gonna. We're not gonna, I'm not gonna single somebody out and say, well, this is the best employee in the court, I assume we're gonna give.
Uh, that's not what she was getting, that's not what she was getting.
Uh, she was getting that, all of her certifications and all of her qualifications and her longevity, that's what she was getting at, we've got other employees with longevity, uh, and those kind of things, so, I don't, I wish she could make a hundred thousand.
Oh, I, I understand, I understand, she, I told her she need, she, she come to me, and I told her that's what this was for, to voice her opinion. I've been coming to the commissioner's court since I started office, I'm one of the only department is that actually shows up, at least, I was constantly. I, I want to know what's going, I want to learn, that's why I told her, come and voice your opinion, that's why, not you, our main reason, that's why she.
That's why I feel about it, partnership, I always thought they should have certificate, make it, you know that?
I don't know, I understand, I understand, we all, I do believe, and what, what her place got is appreciated, but she felt so, she voiced her opinion, and we'll move forward.
I really did think we were, we were, it's like we did the other courts, uh, thirty five.
That was never true.
Yeah, it was, I said it.
The ones that the sheriff's office was discussing.
And then I said, I think if we do that, everybody should, you know, chief clerk should.
You mean, you want to roll in, longevity increases?
No, I didn't say longevity increases. She did. We, I said, but.
I'm, I'm not sure if I know exactly what all she does, or, or the case of the council. So I'm not sure if everybody know what all they do down there, the case of, that I should conclude with simple, all this stuff, there is a great deal of.
My court, I've started here, he's been here, almost, I have, almost, been a couple of months, she does a lot of things for a lot of everybody.
I know she does.
I work with everybody. Moving, so. She, she wishes what she does also.
Her people's jobs, she's, I mean, everybody, everybody works hard in their job.
I agree. I just wondered, Will, just wait here, please.
I just hate that she's so upset that she didn't call us names, cowards.
Sir.
I, I just hated that she felt so put off about what we've done there, that she called us cowards, it was coward's way out, what we did.
I did not hear that. I'm not, judge there, I'm hard here.
Well, he heard it.
I had some fear, I forgot about that.
And he is hard here, trust me, he worked for me.
Is it hard here to do something?
I lived in this one. You see me, when somebody talked to me about, I used to turn my head.
Hey, did you sit in this? I was like, being new for your road. Sir? I was like, being new for your road.
I see a path now.
All the people driving, I would like.
I was scared, I was. Can you do that?
When they come down through there, on that straightaway, and I'm afraid one of them's gonna lose control, and they end up in my yard, and over my grand, he's just gonna be back.
I just don't know, I can even make them slow down.
Okay. I'll do it.
Okay. One more. Something else.
Thank you.
And, and, and it's gonna be quick and easy. Okay. We did, I don't have, we did some. It sounds like many things. Uh, okay. Just keeping you on your toes.
I'll go pretty small, I won't.
Okay.
Do this up in the middle, bend the F one, as discussed, instead of receiving bids on prime oil, or three point six miles, press thing through that.
Right, and it's seventy five cents per square yard, I put it down, and it's gonna be from another distributor, and it's gonna be under fifty thousand, so I'm just, I don't.
You're just informing.
I'm informing them.
Seventy five, man?
No, actually.
No, actually.
Right, it's under fifty thousand.
I'm looking at Robert right here.
How much is it?
Thirty dollars a ton.
Three dollars a ton, ain't more than that.
Forty.
Forty, forty, three dollars should be really. Forty.
Oh, that's a good.
Forty dollars a ton, I didn't know that.
Not using wire, bro?
No, I'm, I'm only, I'm only, one lap.
Next, you gonna do, you got more of your crushing, it's gonna go around on you?
I'm just doing one, yep. But God knows, it needs a pepper, or, Murray Summery Road, is it not?
If you contact them more, they have their ground to do that.
Fairbeat.
I said my entire crew out there, so.
They're fairbeat. Yeah, with your, we're letting, uh.
Go for it.
The journey. Fruit, yes, service.
Home fire?
Murray's.
Oh, right.
Our departments, other news, start hydrating the water, so, we got a foul on the head. Terry Horseville.
Wow, free.
Okay. Pretty good, pretty good stuff, they're letting us do it, you know?